Call the meeting in order, roll call please.
Brian Card.
Here.
Melody Gilmet, 533 Squaw Rock, wrote extension, Danielson.
Present. Seating of alternates, Michael, you're seating. Any addendums?
Yes, there is. On your tables in front of you, you'll see an amended agenda. So, the addendum to the agenda was under Section 8, New Business, Number 3, Site Plan Review. That has been added, and we will discuss that when we get there.
Citizens' comments on items not subject to a public hearing. Individual presentations not to exceed three minutes, limited to an aggregate of 21 minutes, unless otherwise indicated by a majority vote of the commission. Public comment can be made in person or submitted by 2:00 PM on the day of the meeting via email or publiccomment@killenlyct.gov, mail to the Town of Killenly Planning and Development Department Office, 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239, or put in a drop box on the side of the town hall. Public comments will be posted on the town's website, www.killenly.org. As a hybrid meeting, citizens can participate in the citizens' comment by WebEx. Meeting number 28616830450, password PLAN.PLAN.meet102124, or join by phone 14156550001. Anybody from the public want to speak to anything concerning planning and zoning that's not on the agenda, not on the public hearings tonight? All right. Zone map change, Mark Bernard, application number 241336. I work with Mark, so I'm going to recuse myself and let Brian take over.
Do I got to read the whole thing? I thought you were going to read it. Zone map change, application 241336, Mark Bernard Properties LLC. Zone change from low-density village commercial for the following properties, 350 Hartford Pike, GIS map 107, Lot 51, 3.013 acres, 328 Hartford Pike, GIS map 107, Lot 50, 0.78 acres, 319 Hartford Pike, GIS map 107, Lot 19, 0.65 acres. Floor is yours, sir.
Actually, I have these to give up for the response for the 902 criteria.
Just to recap for those in the audience, so this was a public hearing continued from last meeting. There are a few things that were brought up in the last meeting that the applicant was asked to go back and address, specifically Section 900.1, the application requirements, to make sure that the application was complete and fulfilled the requirements of Section 900, as well as Section 902, the criteria, to explain a little bit more in detail regarding the change proposed.
So, looking over for the Village Commercial District, it says they intended to provide residential areas for the variety of retail, service, financial, and other commercial establishments within walking or short distance of their home. So, looking at the Section 902 criteria, it says errors in the existing regulation. So, the blue is my response to what was listed there. So, it says this zone change request is to make the property consistent with the previous use. The church was allowed to function in its own allowable zone, if you will, and today's standards, it would be the Village Commercial Zone, which would be complying with what was previously done at the property. Changes that have taken place in the rate and pattern of the town's development and land use. I'm not sure of the changes, but this is to be consistent with what is already in place, going from the corner properties over to where this property is located. The supply of land available in the present and proposed zone. Present zone, which is the yellow on the map, including my property, is 23.3 acres, which 9.6 acres of that is a cemetery, which is in the previous zone. The proposed zone already has 2.59 acres that are already zoned that. The physical suitability of the land for the proposed zone, it's already been used for the purpose that's being presented, so there's nothing that would really need to change there. The effect of the change on the surrounding areas, physical, social, and economic. Using the property again, people can walk to them to utilize it. Social and economic will only be better for the area, because right now the buildings are vacant, and there's nothing going on with them. The purpose of zoning and the objective of the plan of development is to provide residential areas with a variety of retail, service, and financial or other commercial establishments. So, that's really what we're looking to do, is again, to bring it back to what was already being done, but to meet the zoning requirements. Neighborhood acceptance weighed against community needs. This will provide options to neighbors that they currently do not have. A place to walk to and services to be utilized, life put back into the property versus empty buildings. Community needs are equally important, and this should be a good thing for all that's 902.2, the legality of the proposed amendment and whether some other method or procedure is more appropriate under the zoning regulations. There seems to be no other method, from what I can see. This is the best zoning to meet the former uses and the current anticipated ones. 902.3, the size of the area involved, it's 4.43 acres total. Changes creating a total contiguous zone of less than 10 acres are, in general, not to be considered favorable. Adding the 4.43 acres to the existing Village Commercial District, which currently is 2.59 acres, brings it to 7.03 acres. This brings the total closer to the desired 10 acres, which is normally what's required for this zone, it's 10 acres or more, and this is just making it more consistent with what was looking for in that zoning.
Can you walk us through some of the sketches that were provided?
That was from the sewer and water department. I went there for where the sewer lines run on the property. So, that was required, so I went down there to get what they have for the sewer lines. The property is served by a private well. It's city sewer, and it's natural gas.
So, these were drafted by the Killenly Water Pollution Control?
Yes.
Yep. All right, and these are just for 328 Hartford Pike?
For 350, sorry.
Sorry, 350 Hartford Pike?
Yep, the former St. Joseph's property.
Okay. Is there any information for 328 Hartford Pike or 319 Hartford Pike?
I did not get that. Those are literally, I think, right from the road, straight in. Not where mine, with the several buildings, is more complex. I think the six-family, three, the one on the side, it's literally from the road, there has sidewalk, and it's right to the property. And then the four-unit on the side of 4G's, again, I think it's just a straight line, where mine, it just shows it going to the multiple buildings that are on the property.
And the one lot that pulled out, is there any information?
When it was mentioned at the last meeting, I was more concerned that that was a single family, and they were going to do a zone change. So, in speaking with them, they weren't, they were fine not being involved in doing the zone change, because they're not continuous to the other properties that are going for the zone change. So, the one on the side of 4G's, the four-family, it's already a budding, the Village Commercial, and then my prop, the 350 Hartford Pike and the six-family would be contiguous with the other corner lot. That's already the Village Commercial property.
Okay. And any other information for the commissioners' ask?
I think everything was handed in that was asked of the last time. Is there something missing?
Commissioners, any questions or additional information requests? Nothing yet.
I have one question. You know, looking at this thing, it says the power cable lead in sewer trench one foot below. I didn't know that those were both in the same trench.
I'm not going to question the code on that, I'm just, what they wrote in there, so...
I'm pretty sure that's, if we were building a new school, that was an issue.
I don't know when that was put in, though. Who knows? Again, this is not an as-built, this is a hand sketch. It's not even signed by anybody that I could see. So, these signatures are not the people that signed it, is it Reverend?
Well, this was done in '78, it says.
Right. Again, this is, like I said, this is what I got from the sewer department, and this is what they have in their file on the property.
So, anybody from the general public like to speak on this application? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium, name and address, please.
Mr. Goslin, 347 Hartford Pike, Davil. You have my previous statement. I would like to say a few couple things. As this change to a commercial business would affect, would affect everyone in the area. The commercial business, we do not, me, myself, and my wife do not want a commercial business like being built right now at the commercial business in Davil, where you've got Starbucks, and you've got Jersey Mikes, and this and that. We don't want that kind of commercial business across the street from where we live. Changing to, I spoke to Mr. Bernard today, and he promised me that if this was changed, he would not sell to anyone who would demolish these buildings and build a commercial establishment like that's being built down by the industrial park right now, by the commercial business right now in Davil, by Bell Park. Our only concern is that this remain a quiet area. We don't want a tavern, we don't want a barroom, we don't want Dollar General, we don't want that kind of business across the street in our, in this area. We have all that down the street. We don't have a problem with a real estate office, we don't have a problem with the insurance office, a medical office, a dental office, a photography place, we don't have a problem with any of that type of business. And we just don't want a business that's going to be a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week noise, noisy business that's going to interrupt our lifestyle. And Mr. Bernard promised me that he would not sell to anyone who would demolish all these buildings and build a building of such a, of such a, what I'm discussing right now. So, that's basically all we have to say, is we just like this, we just want you to consider everything that we've proposed, and we just, we've lived there for many years, and it's always been a quiet area, and we just don't now want all the traffic and problems that arise from a big commercial business like they're building now. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
My name is Tom Payne, I live at 1589 Upper Maple, Davil. And I talked last time, and like he's saying, they could have the small little things that aren't 24 hours, all that. And I was saying last month, I live here, they put the cemetery opening in front of my house, it used to be next to the church. Now, it's in front of my house. I plan on living there and dying there and getting planted there, but if they put a bunch of buildings, tear down that in the corner, there's nothing there except that big duplex. If they rip that down, put a strip mall, all the stuff in the front wheel will come in. Now, where you come in the back will be all the dumpsters where they keep the fat and the grease and the trash, and that's going to be adjoining the cemetery where I'll be for eternity. I don't like it, so I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Melody Gilmet, 533 Squaw Rock, wrote extension, Danielson. I don't live next to you guys or where you are, but I had something similar I had to go against before, so I understand. I've dealt with this gentleman in some of my other dealings, he is a man of his word, if he does tell you that. I really firmly in my heart believe that he is not going to put a McDonald's up across the street from you. I've been looking over the proposals, and I'm a historical person myself, but on the other hand, I hate to see a building go in disrepair, stand on the side, and for years, that property has been in disrepair, a lot of vagrancy and that sort of thing. I think with what Mr. Bedard is proposing, will actually bring that building back to life, bring some more community things in the area, but also respecting the area that these people live in, and I think he will do that. So, I'm, I know I don't live there, but I would really love to see that property up and coming and become something that our community can use instead of go in disrepair. Just like some of the other buildings, they collapse upon themselves, and I think he's the man that could bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Cooper Riley, I live at 100 Cook Hill Road in Danielson. I, like Mel, felt that, I've had dealings with Mark, and since he was a young man, and I know he's a man of honor. We have had use of that land, that property, to do a yard sale a couple of years, and he has always been for the community, very welcoming. I like you guys, don't live there, but I know he's a man of honor, and if he told you, that's what he would do, that's what he would do. I think that seeing that property fall into disrepair would be a shame. You just go down the road a little bit, and you see primes, which is a mess, and we have so many other mills and things that are falling apart. So, if you could utilize that and make a little bit of a change to the zoning, I think it would be well worth it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this application? No? And just for a point of clarification, Emery, I don't know if you're going to say, but this application is to change the zoning, underlying zoning of the property to Village Commercial. So, this is not a specific application in front of us or a specific use. Just a little public's clear, any use under Village Commercial would be allowed on this property, under the current owner or any future owner. So, there's no guarantee made with this change on our behalf. We're not making any guarantees, just any use on the Village Commercial would be allowed, so I just want to make sure the public is aware of that. So, Commissioners, any additional questions, comments?
Well, no, not really.
Not that I can think of right now. The only thing I'm thinking of is there is sewage there now, right? Presently, is if the hog gets changed and has to be sold as two, two, as two stores or outlets, or whatever you want to call them, do they have to go to the sewage plant? Or will that connection be sufficient? Because sufficient to handle the situation?
Again, there's no use in front of us right now. This is just changing the underlying zoning to Village Commercial, so we don't know what would be put in front of us, what's going to happen to the property, all right? It's just changing the Village Commercial, and if I recall, Village Commercial does not require sewer, does it?
It's not explicitly required. There's other ordinances that require sewer connection if you're within, say, 200 feet. Obviously, our sewer moratorium does affect that.
Correct.
The ordinance basically says if you propose any change in use that is a significant increase, which is a case-by-case, one, they would have to go to the WPCA for approval. Regardless of zone change or not, it would be each individual application or change. Even a substantial renovation with the existing zoning could trigger WPCA.
Okay.
There is some of the activity already in the area that was mentioned this evening. 4G's is right there. They've got a bar. It's a restaurant primarily, but, you know, there's some of that activity right there in that corner.
There's no other questions? The Commissioners? Staff? Can I adjourn a motion to close the public hearing or continue?
I'll make that a motion, close the public hearing.
Thank you. Motion by Mike. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Michael Nico?
Yes. Yes. All right. Thank you. Yep.
Doing the perfect job, Brian. He's going to jump in. All right. Zone map change from general commercial to industrial to central business district. And industrial to the central business district for 119 Commerce Avenue, Full Railroad Ave., 79 Commerce Ave., 67 Commerce Ave., 63 Commerce Ave., 57 Commerce Ave., 51 Commerce Ave., 49 Commerce Ave., 47 Commerce Ave., 41 Commerce Ave., and 37 Commerce Ave. Go ahead, Emery, and lead us through.
All right. First off, I want to let the commission know that you have in each one of your spots a letter, we did receive a public comment. I will go through that public comment when we get to the public comment time. Again, just to let you know that this is a change of zone from general commercial and industrial to central business district. So, 119, if you look, we have a zone map, a zone map change that you have, you have a series of maps with you, and that shows you the amount of land and the addresses for each parcel that would be added to the central business district. And the purpose for this is for the intent for the area to be continuous with the existing, excuse me, central business district zone. Behind that, you will have the map that shows the existing zoning. The red is in the commercial, the purple is in an industrial. We'll have you notice that the lots in the industrial area are very small lots. They all have, at this, most of them have a house on them or an individual residence. And then you have the larger general commercial area up top. When we discussed this later, last month, it was, consensus was to try to change this all to the central business district. The next map you have is the plan metric map. This shows where the utility poles are located, this shows you where your catch basins are located, where your hydrants and that sort of issue is located. Then we have a butter's map. We have the 125-foot a butter's list report. You have the list of the parcels and the acreage of each parcel, and the landowner of each parcel is on another map. The total amount of acreage that would be entered, that would be, become part of the central business district would be 7.04 acres. The current existing central business district is always, is already above the 10 acres. You also have the comparisons between the various zoning, which is industrial, general commercial, and central business district. What I did is I put central business district in the middle, so you can understand, because they're both going into, light industrial and general commercial are both going into the central business district. And the 902s. We, staff brought this about because it just did not make sense to have an industrial-zoned area in the borough of Danielson, which is basically our, basically our downtown, and across a budding river. An individual landowner would not be able to sell their property to an industrial complex, and if there was an industrial complex that wanted to go in, if one landowner said no, the whole deal would go through. We also have concerns about what the individual landowners, because the lots are so small, what they would be able to do with that. It does not make sense to have it on an industrial manner. And then we had all our, again, it's in the staff report, all legal notices were posted, and all the landowners were notified that they had, that we had this going through. We also notified NICOG, we also notified the Borough Council, and that's where we got our public comment from. It's basically, this is a letter in support. It said it will also allow for some financial relief to property owners, as it will be easier, more affordable to insure their properties. And that is one of the things that we brought into, under consideration when we were doing this. Does the commission? It was from Tammy Wakefield, who is the Borough of Danielson, one of the Borough of Danielson members, council members. Does anyone have any questions?
So, Emery, you gone through the 90, whatever that section is?
Actually, if I had a further section of it. We believe, I'll just use...
Quickly cruise through it.
Quickly. Changes taking place in the rate and pattern of the town's development and land use. It, again, as we said, it do not feel that it makes sense to have an industrial area, number one, that is so small, next to the river, in the center of town. Supply of land available in the present and the proposed zones, I went through that with you. The physical suitability of the land for the proposed zone. There are parcels that are next to it that are but this, that are very similar in shape and size, that are in our central business district. The effect of the change on the surrounding area, fiscal, social, and economic. We believe it would be a better change. It would also, we've had some issues with, we've lost two of the businesses that were there, the general commercial business burnt down, and the one industri, what they considered industrial business is no longer there. The building is vacant. Again, we want to try to reestablish uses within those vacant buildings. We want to be able to make it more suitable for the landowners. Anybody who has a house here is a residence, it is still, can maintain and be stayed as a residence. It is still, can maintain and be stayed as a residence. So that, would not have a problem on that. The purpose of the zoning and objectives of the plan and development. Again, we were just trying to make it more in line with the rest of the area and to reuse vacant buildings, which is something that we have underneath our land use. And neighborhood exceptions weighed against community needs. Again, it, it just doesn't make sense for the foreigner industrial area to be in the center of town, up against a river with such small lots.
Okay, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Any?
No.
Brian? Staff, anything? Commissioner, anybody from the public want to speak to this? Name and address, please, and then.
Lance Collins, 63 Commerce. I grew up on that street, working at the grain store for my uncle when I was a small child. Then I, once it became of age, started working there in high school and worked there till it burnt down. In that span, I bought a house at 63 because I knew the businesses that were there between the glass shop that mostly didn't have people going there. It was mostly them going out and installing windows, so very little traffic. Essentially with the grain store too, maybe in the 90s it was somewhat busy, but as the bigger stores have come in and pulled the businesses towards Brooklyn and Dayville, there wasn't much traffic at that point. And that's the reason that I purchased that house on the dead-end street. Very quiet, no traffic, no businesses past it besides the two that I had mentioned. So for me, I'm not sure really how it's an advantage for me. It seems like those two bigger lots could turn into a lot of the same stuff the other people were talking about with businesses, bar, restaurant on the water with tons of cars going in and out. I would say that there's probably under 20 cars a day at this point. The most traffic we get is the construction firm that parks their trucks down there while they do everything downtown. So for me, I would love to keep it as it is with a quiet residential kind of street. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak? No comments from everybody? Mark? Michael? Okay, I guess we close the public hearing? Make a motion to close?
Make motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Roll call. Yeah, let's do a roll call.
Brian Carr?
Yes.
John Sarantopoulos?
Yes.
Michael Hucow?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's close.
Okay. I think now it's unfinished business back to Mr. Bernard again, so I'll step out once more time.
Zone map change application 241336. Mark Bernard, Bernard Properties LLC, zone change from low-density village commercial for the following properties, 350 Hartford Pike, 328 Hartford Pike, and 319 Hartford Pike. How's the commission want to go?
I'd make a motion to move it from low-density to village commercial.
Second. We have a motion in a second. But John, any discussion? No? None? My only one concern would be if you look at the uses, just so we're all aware of this, I believe the six unit and the four unit multifamilies are not allowed in village. Multifamilies not special permitted use, so they would become non-conforming.
Right. Legal non-conforming.
Grandfathered use, non-conforming uses there, so just want to make sure we're aware of that, that that would occur for those two properties, so. There. Any other discussion? No? All right, we have a roll call, please.
Michael Hucow?
Yes.
John Sarantopoulos?
Yes.
Unfinished business, zone map change number 241337, Town of Killenly. Zone map change from general commercial and industrial to central business districts, 119 Commerce Ave., and all those other listed, as listed. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept all the lots listed to change from general commercial and industrial to central business district.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
John Sarantopoulos?
Yes.
Michael Hucow?
Yes.
Brian Carr?
Yes.
Keith Thurlow?
Okay, new business, special permit extension request, application 09-961, Tilcon, Connecticut, 548 W. Egan Road, Killenly, GIS map 263, Lot 22, 112 acres, rural development, request to extend the special permit for an additional three years. Last extension was granted in October 2021. Mr. Wood is going to speak to that. Your request?
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to correct something.
Go ahead.
There is a scribbler there. This does not require a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Down under legal notices. There was no legal notices because it does not, the word "not" was left out, so.
Go ahead.
So this is the Tilcon property located easterly of Route 12 in the southern part of town. Tilcon property extends into Plainfield. They have had an earth removal operation some years ago, primarily on the Plainfield part of the property. Nothing has occurred on the Killenly part of the property in the last decade. They are continuing to renew their special permit every three years as required to keep their options open should the market change and the property become more valuable and they can take more material out. But right now, there's no intention of doing that. There hasn't been any activity in the last three years since the last renewal. So, pretty simple.
Jonathan, any comments from the zoning enforcement?
There's been no complaints regarding the activity there, nor has there been any real activity to speak of. The operation, like the applicant has stated, is, has laid dormant in the last three years.
So what happened, did the town agent here make any?
There's, there's been no inspection because there's been no activity.
No activity, okay.
No activity.
Any questions from commissioners? Okay, we just do a motion for this, right, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's a motion to?
I'll make a motion, go for it.
Give a second? Second? Second, Michael? Any further discussion?
Just want to make a question. That it's for another three years. He has to come back in in another three years.
Right. As per regulations, it's going to be three years. Any more comments, discussion? Have a roll call, please.
Michael Hucow?
Yes.
Brian Carr?
Yes.
John Sarantopoulos?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Connecticut Siting Council application, application number 241338, Wyndham Energy Center, Gerald Irwin Senior, landowner, 189 Lake Road, GIS map Lot 80, no, GIS map 83, Lot 6, 63 acres, rural development to develop a 325-megawatt battery energy storage system facility and related interconnection switchyard on a 20-acre portion of the 63-acre parcel. Discussion to be scheduled, required public hearing, meeting, and workshop. So Anne Marie, you want to go summarize this for us?
This is the final item that was on your desk when you sat down. We gave you the application for the compatibility. We do need, if you remember, we need to have a public meeting, not a public hearing, but a public meeting. When we had the last Connecticut Siting Council, we treated that as a special permit, not for actually permitting it, but to how we looked at it, criteria that we met that we looked at, because we have to put in our regulations and orders. And we only have, we have 65 days that we need, we have to do that. Right now, we're looking at November 13th, Wednesday, November 13th, or Thursday, November 14th for the actual public meeting. We would have a joint public meeting with the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission, if you remember those that were here for the last one. We would have the applicant there. They would present their full application. We would ask questions, address concerns. The public does have an opportunity to speak there. And then what we would suggest is that our workshop meeting on November 18th would be the day that we actually go through our regulations and orders, so we can create the regulations and the orders. So that's why I'm saying the site, the site plan and the special permit would be pushed off for a month, only because that would be, unless you want to do, schedule a different date for this.
I mean, I would think that would work good. It's a week before the next meeting in November. And then you've got holiday earlier in the month there, 11th, I think, right?
You have the holiday on the 11th, and then you've got Thanksgiving after, the week after our meeting. So that's why we were thinking if we could have the public meeting on the 13th or the 14th. So I need to ask commission members if they can attend. And then I, we would do our regulations and orders on the 18th. We would put that together on the 18th.
Michael, does that fit with you?
Neither day is fine with me.
I think, why don't we ask Brian first, because I think he's going to probably be the most particular. Is it too early to ask?
I don't know. I've worked forward, but I think it's fine.
Ideally, the 13th, just in case we have CBA, just traditionally.
No, 13th would be fine, I think. Brian, if you have an issue, let us know. Let them know. John, you're good with that.
I don't have to check my calendar.
You're good.
I did pull up, just in case anyone is interested, on the town website, there's a link right on the front page, Vitus Wyndham Energy. If you click on that, it will bring you to this little descriptor page, and you click for here for more information.
Is that the same that's already in this packet here?
It, it has more.
It has a little bit.
Has more?
Has more.
This is enough to read.
And it has the full docket number with all of the attachments, technical report, also links back to some of our own regulations and everything. But for anyone that is interested, that's the full digital one without us killing a lot of trees.
So this would just be another public meeting, which we sit in the front?
Yep.
And listen to what people's concerns are and?
It is a public meeting. It is not a hearing. But if you remember to keep things organized, the last time we did this, we ran it almost as like a public hearing. The applicant was there, they presented their application, then you opened the floor for people to talk for it or against it. Then there was discussion between the commit, the two commissions, and then the commissions broke off and they went back and did their, each set of their own regulations and orders.
But I noticed when you said that, you said, if you remember to keep it organized and structured.
Well, if everybody remembers. Well, I don't, I don't think Michael was there the last time, and I don't think John was there. So it's you and Brian, and I believe Verga was there.
I know, I just.
You just busted me up, I know.
Nope. I think John was there in the audience.
That's right.
That could have been.
Probably was.
Yeah. So, okay, so we're just going to basically listen at that point that night. And hopefully it won't be as contentious as the power plant.
And we gave you this because this is their written application, so you do get to read through it, but there is other, like they call appendixes, other, like many reports within this, like they have one from SHPO, they have a letter from SHPO, they have one from the archaeologist, they have drainage reports, drainage calculations, that sort of thing, all of those put in. And they're all up on the website. Yeah, and the habitats.
Well, so basically, we're, it's not a question and answer. It's, we'll listen to what they have to say and just make notes and listen to the public.
Right.
Because this is the last meeting before we have that meeting, really.
Yep.
So I'm just trying to make sure people realize what our goal is there.
And then the Wetlands Commission is going to meet next month. We're going to do the same thing, just quickly brief them on it. But I did already run it by the chair, and she said that particular week seems to be the best time, timing-wise.
Right.
To get comments, so, because it will be joint with them.
Is there anything that I left off, Ken?
No, I don't know. One thing I left off is what time, because I've got it on the evening block, but what time would the meeting start?
Well, what time would be inconvenient for you?
No, I'm flexible. I just want to put it incorrectly, that's all. I'm fine that night.
So, I mean, what does people think, 6 o'clock, or would you want to try to go earlier or later? What's everybody? I think like we did the other one at 6:00.
Yeah, I wouldn't go earlier because again, if you want the general public there, people have to travel home from work.
Right.
Well, I'm just saying, they don't want to be that, so I wouldn't go any earlier than 6:00.
Well, anybody comment, 6:30 or 7:00? John?
Any special time?
I know you're retired, so it doesn't matter to you.
It doesn't, no.
But we're looking at the wisdom of age and say, okay, I think later would be better.
Well, not necessarily.
No.
You go beyond my bedtime.
6:30, 6:30 work for everybody? Does that, does that sound good to everybody?
I'm going to say that's something we can aim for. Again, it all depends what time is the school is available. I do not know if we're going to be in the auditorium or if we'll be in the cafeteria. I told them we would take either or.
So does it matter, Ken, that work for you, 6:30, as a goal?
Nope, that's fine. I'll just wait for confirmation, just like the rest of you, that evening is wide.
That's the high school, right?
Yep, it would be at the high school. We want to be able to get as many people as we can.
So you need anything on that?
No, we just gave you this because we want to make sure you have time to read through this.
Okay.
Again, like I said, there's appendixes, there's other, like, other reports in the...
Is it the size of this project that puts it in the purview of the Siting Council?
It's the energy.
It's the energies.
The size of the battery.
The size, the size of the project, then, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not like based off acreage, it's just by the megawatts.
No, no, I meant size of, the megawatts of the property, so.
As a utility, Ken, is that what you're saying?
The size of the facility.
And I tried to give you, you know, copies of maps that would give you a good idea about it, but again, as he said, it's literally their application is the size of a three-inch notebook. So, you know, we have the full application, if you want paper, if you want to see it on paper, we have copies of it in our office. I think the town manager has one, I think the library may have one.
Okay, so if we don't need anything from us, we'll move on to the next one, then.
Okay, can we release Ken now?
Well, I was going to ask that. I would have one question for this next one.
Okay, you have a question?
Just real quick question, but we'll just open it and see. Site plan review, application 241340, Dayville Four Corners LLC, 730 Hartford Pike, GIS map 115, Lot 6, G's general commercial zone, 7.04 acres. fifteen, Lot Six, G's general commercial zone, seven point seven acres, general commercial zone, dividing the existing retail unit H into two retail spaces, H one already occupied by Killingley Discount Liquors, five thousand square feet, H two future retail use, thirteen hundred and seventy-eight square feet, review, discussion, action. The commission has the option to assign for staff review. I was going to ask, Ken, just one last question on this, is this necessary, it has to be required before us, because it's site plan?
I'm looking at the agenda, I'm trying to see where you are on the agenda, I had...
I'm not sure you got an addendum.
New business under three, it's on the last one, and I don't know, yeah, we have a corrected agenda, that came on the, our corrected agenda.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the older one, that's, that must be why.
It's a unit at our Davil, it's an older bill, uh...
Yeah, it's a, it's a retail spa, existing retail space, but it's, it's too large for the one occupant, so they're looking to split it, it's a corner of the building, so they're looking to activate a different storefront, create a new storefront.
On the side.
And create a new unit.
So, it is splitting an existing built unit into two?
Right.
So, if it was just internal changes, then maybe, maybe not, but it sounds like there's some external things that are occurring there that would kick in the site plan and review, is that right?
The reason why it was, it had to be put in through site plan is because that was one of the stipulations of the whole, I'm going to say mall, being approved, that when stores changed in and out, that they go through site.
You mean, you mean as the last time we approved it, because
Yeah.
The first time was before zoning.
Yeah, one of the last times you approved, it was before my time, but...
So, so, Ken, if you'd like, I'm just going to read you the one section where it may allow for this to continue either with a site plan or even with, on staff. So, site plan, this is under section four twenty, point two, point one, permitted uses, and I am starting on the second sentence. Site plan review shall be required before any zoning permit is issued for any building or use or enlargement in size or other altercations of any building or change in use or actual use of any building, including accessory structures. Site plan review is not required for repairs or alterations to existing building or structures, provided that such work does not increase the floor area of any buildings or structure, and does not change the actual use thereof. The question was, is this an alteration, is this a whole new use, you know, you're taking an area that's kind of storage and creating a new retail, a new entrance, so that's why it walked the line, we, we advise the applicant to apply.
But actually, it was...
It was part of the, it was part of the decision or the approval for the whole...
Plaza.
Plaza.
As well, yeah.
It was in the decision that the whole plaza, they hope for a site.
But as far as being retail, that, that unit has always been retail, I mean, maybe it's storage now.
Part of a retail, yes.
But it's, seasonally, it's always been the Halloween shop every year for the last how many years. They would put it up for Halloween, then take it down.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's been continuously used as a, sorry, okay, Ken.
So, so, two, two things I guess I would say, is that if it was a storage area, and it was being then changed to a, you know, actual retail area, then I think site plan review would be required. If it was retail space, but it wasn't used all the time, I wouldn't say that's a change. But Emery points out that if this commission decided, when it granted approvals in the first place, that it is a condition requiring coming back to the commission every time there's a change, then it should come back to you until you revise that, that requirement.
Is it possible for the site plan to be assigned to staff, because it's basically retail to retail? It's, they're not enlarging the footprint of the building.
It sounds like it would, could be administrative, but for what you were raising, Emery, if the, if the, in the initial approval, there was a specific condition that was added, like above and beyond something specific in the regulation, and the applicant didn't have a problem with it and agreed to it, then that requirement stands, unless it comes before the commission and the commission strikes it, modifies the, the approval, and says you don't have to do it anymore, and then you'd just be dealing with the regulation that Jonathan read, read from. It sounded like, from the language that Jonathan read, that this wouldn't require site plan approval if that was, that's already retail space, it's, it's something that would, you could administratively, you know, determine, determine that. So, my only concern would be, is if it was very clearly specified, when the whole project was approved, that they had to come back regardless of what the site, your, your regulations say. Then your commission might want to consider modifying, if modifying that condition and just use the regulations as the, as the, the determinative factor in whether or not it has to come in for the commission. So, is it clear, is it clear from the original approval that it added essentially a requirement on top of what the regulations might have said, that they always have to come in every time there's a change in the tenant?
I'm going to, I'm going to double check that, but that's the way we always...
Yeah, well, it's, it sounds like site plan review was required in the application for changes.
Right.
But site plan review could still also, still be pushed to staff. So, so, the, I think that's up to the commission, if they would want to push it to staff or not, but the, it's not a very complex application, but that's, that's up to them.
No, I know, but, well, just, every time something like this happens, it's like, it's all retail, it's within an existing structure, you're just dividing an existing unit up to, you know...
It seems like it's time best spent for the staff and not on the commission's agenda from where I'm sitting.
Exactly, that's my point, and it's, so, and if, so if we have to act on it in one way or another, how much of a, what do we have to do to get it, if the commission decides, agrees, so to just be handled at staff level from now on, for some, for this type of thing? What do we...
Right.
Go ahead.
No, I, I think that's, I think that's perfectly appropriate, and it sounded like Jonathan, Jonathan had language he was reading that would trigger the time that it might have to come to you, right? But other than that, I think your commission could give direction that, unless it's specifically required, when you're dealing with just changes within, you know, configuration with approved retail space, that that could be handled administratively, and you just direct the, the staff accordingly.
Yeah, so my question is, is if it's just because of the requirement of the past approval, what would we have to do, what kind of a, how would we have to go into changing it, so?
Oh, okay, an app, that could just be not, as silly as it might sound, if that was part of the site plan approval, then an application to modify the site plan, just get rid of that condition, could come before the commission, that'd probably take you ten minutes to, to deal with that, and you just eliminate that condition, so then you're just left with the standards of the regulations.
Okay. Anybody, any questions for Ken? Seth? Thank you, Ken, you can go, I appreciate it.
See you in a few weeks. Take care, have a good night, everybody.
Okay, commissioners, any questions or any comments, what you think on this discussion?
I mean, as far as this goes, I think we can just give it to staff and let them handle it, I don't know, in my opinion, you?
On this one?
Yeah.
I don't remember the, the approval or the approval condition, but I know, if I remember right, we had concerns on traffic flow in this parking lot, that was one of the biggest reasons, I think, why we wanted to make sure that any new use got reviewed. So, I don't know what the new use is, but, I mean, that's, just sticks out of my head.
We did.
It's why we wanted to make sure we understood what was going to happen, and now you're adding a fifth business, all right, it was four, four units, now it's a fifth, so I would expect that we'd want to at least see that.
There's more than that.
Huh?
There's more than that, yeah, the whole building.
Well, the building itself.
It was the whole thing, it was all done at one time, but...
No, but you go, Planet, Goodwill, right, Harbor, liquor store.
All these.
No, all these.
All these, what did I miss?
And then Dollar Store.
All right, apparently I don't, I don't go there as much as my wife, so, whatever. So, we're adding another business.
Well, the, the point is, is, I mean, yeah, parking was an issue, and I think at that point, is when we went in and it, we started sectioning the parking lot off, putting in curbing, because it used to be just a plain parking lot, and then trying to make traffic patterns in there, and ended up getting several people's ankles broke, because now they were dealing with curbs when they've never had curbs in there. So, we ended up eliminating the biggest portion, and what's left is what we decided to leave, or...
Yeah, that all sticks in my head, I guess.
No, that's, that was it, so...
Their pool says, but if it's that simple.
Well, we can keep it like it is, that's fine, I don't care, it's just a thought, if we're not, you know, so, anybody, I'm in favor of just passing it to staff, I don't know, other people?
I agree.
Um, to me, depending what the condition says, the commission, if the conditions has it has to come to us, then it has to come to us.
Right, me, obviously, I'm not trying to bypass the, the regulations, but if we don't need to get involved, then...
It's what we get paid for.
Oh, that's right, the last paycheck I got was with...
That's what we get paid for, a big bucks.
I think it was an employee, nineteen eighty-seven. Any other comments from other commissioners? No, you got, what do you want to do with it? You know, I don't want it based on just us two.
Staff.
John?
Staff.
Okay. That's three staff, and like giant Brian says, if it does say that we have to deal with it, then we'll deal with it. How's that?
So, we'll just look at the condition?
Yeah.
Right.
And then if it is a condition that we have to deal with, then I agree with Brian, it's probably was the parking area issue, so just address some kind of a parking area, maybe along that retaining wall, right in front of the place, on the, on the end of the building, because nobody parks down there, they park a snowplow there all the time. Um, let's see, do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, yeah, let's put a motion.
Can I motion for that, please, somebody?
I'll make a motion, that staff look at it, unless there were specifications on the, permitting that dictate that we have to take a look at.
Second, second by Mark, Michael, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, no. All right, thank you. Adoption of minutes, workshop minutes, September sixteenth, and regular meeting minutes, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Can I motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second, any further changes, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Continuation of workshop, planned residential development, site plan, so, Emery, we're going to end up continuing this in the workshop level with, for the other two sections. What, you tell me what?
Well, I think the commission needs to decide if you want to use the workshop of November eighteenth to do your regulations and orders, that we need to get done for the Connecticut Siting Council, and then if that is the case, then the PRD, we don't have any hearings, the PRD portion of the workshop can go into our regular meeting.
If we don't have any hearings?
Well, we don't have any hearings, because we'd have to schedule the hearing tonight. All we would be doing would be accepting.
I'm, I'm fine with, yeah, we keep the eighteenth open for the other one, and then the...
And then, what I'll do is I'll do a workshop
Yeah, we can do it.
For the regulation and orders, and depending on what we get in, I can always say a continuation of the workshop into the regular meeting, so we can continue the regulations and orders, and also get the PRD done.
Yeah, we can do whatever time we need for the PRD, and if we end up running out of time, we run out of time, do it for the next one.
Does the regulation order discussion have to be with general public? I mean, I know the six o'clock, okay.
No, that's just strictly you, it's open to the public, but the public doesn't speak because you're just strictly trying to get that done.
Okay. Workshop schedule, we still, we get that done? Correspondents, anybody? Nope. Notice the exempt modification, singular wireless PCS, that's something you're just adding to the tower or something? Unless you got questions for that, we'll just keep going. Departmentary reports, zoning in Inland Wetlands?
Uh, CBA did not meet in October, there was no applications. In, but inland wetlands did meet, we had a site walk for one application on Bear Hill, that application went to the regular meeting and they continued it to the next month, there's some floodplain and wetlands disturbance being proposed, so there were some additional questions they were looking on, being that there's floodplain involved, it most likely will eventually come to you guys. The commission also approved in part a sanitary sewer manhole repair across Killingley, involved seventy-five plus manholes directly related to infiltration, putting on watertight covers and replacing some verticals. There was about half a dozen, they did not approve as, as of right, they asked for some additional information, because they involved excavation. So, those particular ones are going to be broken out and discussed next month.
And that was, Inland Wetlands, it?
That was inland wetlands.
So, you would handle manholes?
Uh, because they are, all, almost all the sewer right of ways are within two-hundred feet of...
Of a wetlands?
Of a wetlands, but the question was, what is maintenance and what, what isn't? So, the majority, they said, was maintenance, as of right, there was a few, though they wanted additional details on.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. Economic Development?
Killingley was awarded the Sustainable CT Recertification, so we're good until twenty twenty-seven, that's basically best practices for community sustainability. There, on October twelfth, there was a Killingley Small Town Music Festival, it ran from twelve o'clock till ten PM, and it was a great, family-friendly event, first-time event on a holiday weekend, it was impressive with the turnout, it went well. We have two ribbon cuttings coming up on October thirtieth, Dunn Marketing is in the one forty Main Building, they'll be doing their ribbon cutting, and then the Killingley Redemption Center over at fifteen Commerce Ave. is now open, but they'll be doing their ribbon cutting on November first. At our last Economic Development Commission meeting, we met with Superintendent of Schools and the President of the Killingley Business Association to see how we can further collaborate with our young people and get them in, active in the community, and introduce them to new businesses or business opportunities. And as a result, our Small Business Academy, we have two Killingley High School students, so we're going to allow sixteen-year-olds to participate in that program on a yearly basis. Our next meeting is November fifth, and then on October twenty-third, the Northeast Chamber has partnered with the Eastern Regional Tourism District, we're holding a tourism summit for our legislators to advocate for increased tourism dollars, so we can be competitive with other New England states. Right now, we spend the least amount per capita, so we're going to try and see if they can figure that out and increase the budget, because it affects everything from hotel taxes, sales and use tax, gas tax, and it's a no-brainer on the return on investment, it brings more money in than what they're expending. That's all I have to report.
Town Council?
From the Town Council meeting, there was a public hearing in regards to the ARBA funding of one point six million going to the Westfield Avenue Project, there were no comments, so the one point six million will go to the Westfield Avenue Project, and it will decrease the amount of the bonding. Pura has, will have a presentation at, at Killingley, either December fourth or fifth, to let residents know what Pura's function are, and, function is, and allow for questions, and it's, they're looking to have the presentation at the high school auditorium, there'll be more information. From the WPCA Capital Project, Mary put together the capital improvement plans that were part of the facility's update project, and what parts were removed, and then she had another document with the capital improvements that happened in the past five years, and all the pump station needs, need repairs, and there was a walkthrough planned for federal and state funding, but that has been changed. and state funding, but that has been changed. They're going to try to do it in December. From the Brickyard Project, the first portion of the project, the replacement of the block, box culvert in the parking lot at Furnace Street should have started. The culverts are in production and the highway crew is replacing the project and it should be completed by the end of October, which is very soon, and they will begin at the first, at the Furnace Street connection point, and the former foundry building was demolished and the underground oil tanks were removed. The library boiler, they put out for bids and it was awarded to New England Service and Controls, and the cost will be about $100,000 and they're expecting a lead time of six to eight weeks for the installation. And we had year-end transfers and it's, transfers within depart, within departments, so $1,795 was transferred into open land acquisition and then $47,859 was transferred into the reserve for storm maintenance. And that is it. Any questions?
Questions?
I have one for the economic development. Is this storage facility related to the possibility that something else is coming into this area? Why is this storage facility being located here in Killingley? I know the lines are there, the transmissions lines and everything, but is there something else going on that?
No, I think it's just because of the location on the grid and next to the power plant. There's, you know, this is a standalone project.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.